Not that I need a gavel, but I am going to call our special meeting to order. Thank you for your patience as we all log in correctly here. Kathy, please let the record show that all board members are in attendance. And our first item of agenda is to approve our short agenda. The recommended action is that the board approve the agenda as presented.
Please.
Charles? Sharita? Any discussion? Hearing none, we are ready to vote. Motion passes. The suspenses is killing us.
[laughing]
Yes. Well, good evening, and as you all know, tonight is our time to hear from two different particular consulting groups regarding the superintendent search. And we welcome our first group, which is GR Recruiting, to the podium. As you know, we have, you have 25 minutes to present to us. There will be a timer on our screen just to help you know exactly how much time you have, and our board secretary will have that on the screen. And then upon completion of the presentation, we'll have about 20 minutes for board members to ask you any specific questions and to dive a little bit deeper. Any questions at this time? Okay, great. We welcome you to the stage, and would you please introduce yourself? I'm sorry, it's not really a stage. It's the podium. It's the podium. If you're gonna dance, that would be quite a surprise. Right?
Soft shoe there.
That's right.
I'm an Apple guy, so... And I'm our tech support. You see, superintendents were always, ex-superintendents were always enabled, so what do I click? Oh, slideshow. Correct. Help.
We can do the right hand at the bottom. We have someone coming to help.
There it is. There it is, right here.
It will screen down the bottom.
Other side.
Other side? There. This one, right? Could you do that for me? Thank you. I can do this.
Yes. There we go. And if...
She's hired.
All right.
She's hired. Ready?
Yep.
Perfect. Yes, absolutely, so we can hear you. Thank you.
Well, thank you for having GR Recruiting here and allowing us to visit with you about your super test search business. And experience is the key, and you're going to hear a lot from us about experience, and I'll visit with you a little bit about that. You'll see on our screen a little bit about a map that we have here. We're a nationwide search firm, and you'll see our mission statement, committed to our clients by recruiting and matching and supporting outstanding leaders. And I want to tell you that the recruiting and matching and supporting, particularly that last phrase, supporting outstanding leaders. Some of you I recognize when we came into the room here. You know, I've been in this room here before. Different table, different, you know, different thing. But the supporting is really, really important. We're gonna, we're going to, you know, do our presentation, but I wanted to tell you that my name is Gary Ray, President of GR Recruiting, and this is Dick Christie, Gloria Davis, and Lane Plugg. And they will tell you a little bit about where they're going to be at in this process. This is the team. So we're not here to sell the job, and then somebody else show up. And it's, and I put together this team based upon their experience and what I know about this district, and so you've got the A-plus team here. And we're gonna talk about the key points in our presentation. We're gonna cover being able to identify what you're looking for in your next superintendent, and involving community input. I'm very strong on community input. And we're gonna talk about the recruitment process to get your great candidates. You know, most of your great candidates aren't reading the one ads and earn, you know, that's not where they're at. So we're gonna go out and try to recruit the very best and brightest that's gonna match the challenges and expectations of this district. Third, talk about investigation candidates. That's really key, no surprises. And we're gonna talk about, you know, securing your top candidate. It's one thing recruiting, but being able to get them signed and delivered. And then the fifth one is being able to talk to you about supporting the candidates themselves. The experience side of it is that those of you that remember me from Ray and Associates, I had a firm that I started 40 years ago called Ray and Associates, small firm, medium. Now it was the largest, you know, search firm around the country. I took, I sold that business, if you read my materials, and I played some golf, and I got tired of playing golf. You know, passion, my, you know, my passion is education and trying to find great leaders for kids, and someone that's gonna fit in the community and work well with staff and so forth. So I came out after three years, and I decided to put together GR Recruiting. And the reason why I came up with GR Recruiting, obviously, my name is Gary Ray, but more importantly, is it's more than searching. It's recruiting people and finding the right ones that are gonna be committed to doing a good job and providing support. That was one of the things I felt back in the search business. We would, you know, we'd go in and do a search, but we weren't there to support people to be successful along their journey as well as board members. And so we're not a placement service. We know, we're trying to find good people for the jobs that we have. So my experience, my personal experience, I've worked in every state in the Union. I've done the state superintendents for all kinds of states. I've done Michigan twice. I've done Illinois, I've worked in Illinois, Florida, done several searches there. Most recently, I did Hawaii a few years ago, as well as Ohio. I've done that a couple of times. Mississippi, all across the country. In Missouri, I did Kansas City. I was visiting with one of the board members just a little bit ago, Mark Bedell. Now he's there. Recruited him, and everyone in the country's trying to get him, but I told him I can remember it when nobody wanted him. And so gotta stay placed where you're at there, you know, a little bit. And, but I've worked at Kirkwood and Ladue, and obviously, some of you know that I did, you know, Springfield a few years when Norm Ritter was here, and, you know, recruited him from Colorado. But you have to remember, on candidates, we don't hire them. The board hires. Our job is to bring you the best and brightest candidates that their skill level matches to the challenges of the district at that particular point in time. And, you know, I've worked on Omaha as well as a number of others, you know, districts around the country. But I think one of the things that I wanted to point out is that when you're in a university setting and a lot, you know, higher ed, you know, those searches are a little bit different than some of the other searches. They're all different and unique. And I've done a lot of university, college, cities and towns around the, around the country. So that's a little bit about experience, because experience does count, and I think you're gonna see some uniqueness from the way I used to do search. I'm going to ask Gloria Davis, come up, or Dick, one of you, come up, introduce yourself, Gloria, and tell a little bit about your background. Then I'm gonna have Dick, and then I'll have Lane talk a little bit about her background, because the associate experience is important. You need to know that these are not rookies. These are people that have done searches not only in the Midwest, but across the country. So we're gonna have a good outreach, but we're also gonna be folks that know something about the Midwest.
Well, I'll just quickly tell you again, as Gary said, I'm Gloria Davis. I am a retired superintendent. Yay! Laugh for me.
Recovering.
Recovering. But I have been in education business for 46 years. I've been a superintendent for 16 years. I'm originally from St. Louis, Missouri, University City primarily, the home of Washington University. You know where all the streets are named after universities. I lived on Harvard, and, you know, the kids had Harvard, Trinity, Dartmouth, and so on. But I was an elementary teacher, elementary principal, two elementary schools in University City. One was the first to receive the National Excellence in Education Award. I was a middle school principal, baptism by fire. And then I was assistant superintendent of curriculum and instruction in University City. And then from there, I was recruited by Ray and Associates at the time to go to Dodge City, Kansas. That was my first superintendency in a district that was 78% Hispanic and Latino. There was a great five years, and then from there, I was recruited. Haven't applied for any job. Somebody picked up the phone, called you, and says, and I'll tell you a story about Dodge City after the meeting, and we're still here. That's a long story. Cowboy boots and Matt Dillon? Me. But from there, from Dodge City, I went to Decatur, Illinois, and I was superintendent in Decatur, Illinois, for eight years. The second longest serving superintendent that they ever had. Retired from there, and then moved to, I was on my way to Atlanta, but moved to Chicago because I was asked to come and take over the position of superintendent of education for the Illinois Department of Human Justice, because they were sued by the federal government for lack of education for the youth in juvenile detention. I am a advocate for criminal justice reform and how it relates to schools and young people. And thus, the office was in Chicago, so I am now still in Chicago, and, you know, sometimes God puts you places you never thought you would be. So that is my background, and I am happy to be here with you this evening. Thank you.
Gloria, you might name some of the jobs you've done.
I have worked with, on several superintendent searches. Most recently, Lawrence, Kansas. Just now working in Champaign with another university town. Have also worked on the search in Seattle, Washington, as well as Clark County, Vegas, Providence, Illinois, and Payette Crest. Those I've done in the last... So, yes, Dick.
Hi, Dick Christie.
Hi, good evening, Gary.
Nice to be here. What I would say is, I had one superintendency, 18 years.
Wow.
So I don't even sit on the scattergram. That was in Coppin West, Iowa, and I've held, you know, I've been assistant superintendent, principal, assistant principal, all those kinds of things. I think the most other relevant experience I've had is that I worked at the University of Nebraska for the last 12 years, assistant professor of educational leadership. I was primarily, I was, the bulk of the superintendent preparation program. At the same time, I ran the university partnership of K-12 school districts and ESU and community colleges, Metropolitan of Education, a source known as MOAC. And had a great experience there. Probably the, again, the most relevant of the relevant experiences I've had. I've done search, search work with Mr. Ray since 1978. So I've done Lee, a primary on about 130 of these searches. I stopped peaking out. Some of the, and, and from the primary searches I've been involved in, I just wrapped up Hickman Mills in June. And I've done Westside in Nebraska, with the Omaha area, and, and I'll mention two, and I worked for Omaha as well, but I'll mention two that I think are significant. One is Lincoln, Nebraska. I was the lead on that. And also Des Moines, Iowa, the largest school district, but superintendent spent there 10 years. In both cases. So that's, there are a lot of experiences I could share, but thanks for right now, that's enough time line.
I'm supposed to keep some time. I'm Lane Pluggie. I'm a former teacher, principal, and superintendent, retired superintendent. I retired from the superintendency to take a position as our church council president. Not a wise decision. But my experience that I bring to this position is probably the fact that I was superintendent in Iowa City, Iowa, a university town, so I know the special skill set, and more importantly, the mindset that's needed to be successful in a position in a university town. And the recent searches I've worked on, Bellevue, Nebraska, which is outside of Omaha, SAC headquarters, Omaha Public Schools, Omaha Westside, Sadele, Iowa, which is a suburb of Des Moines. So, and thank you for the opportunity. I'm the brief one.
To keep on task and stay with time, you see, I'm the rose within all these gentlemen. But our candidate pool, as you've heard all of us say, that's critically important. And one of the things that GR Recruiting brings to you is a large diverse pool of candidates. Each of us has a background, and we know a lot of people. And basically, what it takes place is, as Gary said earlier, people will apply, but often the people that we are looking for that match the qualifications and expectations that you have are people that we, or that are sitting in jobs, that have been successful. So we have to ask them, just like I was asked to go to Dodge City, and I said no three times, and, you know, it's, it's relationships. So, for example, I am a member of the National Alliance of Black School Educators. I was a chairperson of the Superintendent's Commission. I was also a member, and still am, of the National School Superintendent's Roundtable, which is a national organization. My point is, we have a diverse pool of candidates that we communicate with, that we talk to, and that we can recruit for you, and that's what's most important. We know that as a part of GR Recruiting, diversity is extremely important as well. We are the search firm across the country that is nationally known for having a diverse pool of people that we recruit. That's females, that's people of color, that's people from different backgrounds. As you are looking for the right superintendent, as an example, in your district with the percentage of free and reduced lunch students, 40% plus, you need a superintendent that understands children, that families that come from various socioeconomic backgrounds. You need a superintendent that you know will be able to work with you as the board, and also work with your families and communities, and continue to build on the successes that you already have. And GR Recruiting can do that. Our candidates are screened, and we utilize a profile that we have developed with you and through all of the community engagements, which Dick is gonna talk about in a minute, but we use all the information that we have gathered from talking with you individually, talking with stakeholders across Springfield, Missouri, and then we look at what is best for you in terms of the candidates that we bring to you in terms of our screening process. We look at their background, we do an extensive background search, social media, all of the things that we know are out there about each individual that we bring to you. Bottom line, no surprises. You don't like surprises. As a former superintendent, I never liked surprises, and so we make sure that we have screened, we have done background checks on all the various entities that you see indicated on the screen, and we make sure that we bring you those candidates. And then those top two to three candidates, we also do a more extensive background check on them, so that when we bring the names to you, everything that needs to be known about each and every person is known.
So I think you can see the process, and I'm not gonna go into great detail in terms of each step of the process. It's fairly typical of the way a superintendent search will unfold.
Take a leave of absence.
Thank you. I try to talk a lot enough, anyway. So, as it stands, I think the most significant thing is that all of us have experience in operating a process like this and supporting the board as they proceed to secure the candidates and select the candidates they wish to interview. Probably the most, I think the most important component is to say we are an experienced team. We've all been involved in this process, have worked one another as well. So we've worked as a team as that unfolds. In terms of board input, and you can see how that unfolds, the, you know, we'll work with you, and one of our first steps we engage is that we interview each board member one-on-one. And, and we also work with you to determine what stakeholder group do you want to involve, and how do you want to engage them? Whether you want to do it virtually, whether you want to do it face-to-face, whatever the case might be, we'll modify the search to fit your needs, but we'll be clear in terms of what your options are and what the advantages of one step versus another, and what approach versus another approach. We'll work with you in terms of the timeline and finalizing the process. We'll make sure that we identify the information needed to determine the profile of the person that you seek. When we advertise, candidates know what you're looking for, you know what you're looking for, you have something to screen against. We have something to screen against, you have something to select against. And you can see, going on down the list, we'll work with you on the promotional strategies, the advertising strategies, we'll work with you in candidate compensation, we'll regularly communicate with you during the search process, and as I said earlier, we will keep you involved in the process. It is your process, not ours. It's our expertise to help support you in that effort. The virtual input that we involve, we've just developed a two-part survey, just developed it. And we partnered with K-12 Insight and its customer service companies to create this particular survey. The survey has other elements as well that bring information to you as the board and to us as consultants, to be clear about what you're looking for in the new superintendent, but also, I think, as important, how we can provide that information to candidates and to the board, so once, once that person is hired, they are gonna be successful and have an entry plan that will allow them to be successful long-term. And, you know, that survey, as you can see, is offered in various foreign languages, research-based, it's 28 characteristics and traits, and the board really determines that profile, and in the end, you will determine with the data that we provide to you, and our, and our data will be extensive. So recruiting process, we're aggressive in terms of our recruiting. The first things that we do is we identify who are the 20, 25, 30 people that meet that particular profile that we need to reach out to. Not just advertise, but reach out to and say, how can we engage you? How can we make you interested in this? Let's see if you're a match for this particular position. And, you know, as you can see, we'll personally, you can read down the list as our time rolls, but we also engage with social media in order to ensure that our outreach is adequate, and we also, you know, and we're gonna come recruit your superintendent for a period of time as well, not that we would want everyone to be successful and to stay long-term.
So... We're doing time, getting close, aren't we? I think an important thing is, this is your search, and we're going to suggest, but you've hired us, so we're going to give you some good suggestions, but we're going to be flexible in our, our approach as well. One of the neat things I've seen really work is we want to hear each of your voices, but we want you to act as a, as a whole. So we have a scoring instrument that'll help you reach consensus. We will, you'll be selecting the, the people to interview, but we will probably bring to you eight to 10 candidates that we believe best fit the profile. And we've got a video presentation you'll see, and then you can select from there, but we'll also bring all those files. We'll ask if there's anyone you want to interview. We'll bring all those files. The last time Gary did the search, you had 70. So you will have that opportunity also if you want to look at other people. We will give you their names, so. But we will bring you those top, top candidates. We'll help you deliberate, and it's up to you if you want to have either one round of interviews or two rounds. Most boards go with two rounds. The, the first round can, and districts are different on who they want to have, community groups involved, you can do that as well, and that order. So we will also assist you in the development of the interview questions. We will organize the interviews to lead to the final one. We'll also assist you in the contract negotiations. One of the things I would urge you right now to begin with your, with your legal counsel is looking at that contract, reviewing it, to see if you want any changes in it now before we're recruiting. Same with salaries. So we'll have those discussions earlier if we're fortunate enough to be hired. And then just quickly, we'll give you a two-year guarantee. We will waive our fee if for some reason, in those first two years, the candidate decides to leave, or the board decides the candidate should leave. We'll come back for only expenses and redo the search. And we'll also provide with our partner that we've reached out to partner with, K-12 Insight, some coaching programs to assist them as well. And I think Gary's up next.
Are we allowed to ask a question, or do I have to wait? We're gonna wait, thank you.
And this is just K-12 Insight. I'm not gonna cover them now, but they have provided some great feedback to districts now that we can get into with.
Yeah. On K-12 Insight, the reason why I decided to partner with them is that they're customer service-based, and, and that's what we need to do is with our parents and community members is to be able to serve them. It's one thing getting an answer from the school district, you know, you got the correct answer, but how did you feel you were treated? And how did, you felt about the type of answer they gave you? And that's one of the things I mentioned earlier, that the reason why I added this support service business, because I think it's extremely important that when the new superintendent he or she comes in, they get a lot of information about how people feel, not only about their superintendent traits and characteristics, how they feel about their school, and how they feel about certain areas, whether they're being delivered the right kinds of services and how they're being treated. And I, I think that's really important, because I think that helps the board, I think it helps the new superintendent coming in. And so, believe me, I've always had lots of people wanting to partner, but this is one that I really, you know, reached out to because I, you know, I'm familiar with them. And the good thing about, for you, it doesn't cost you anything. You know, it's information that's part of the process, and they gather the information with us on the ground and so forth. So it's, it's a good deal. I, I will tell you that there's no cost throughout the search process with them. I want to talk to you just quickly about the recruiting piece, is that we recruit candidates. That's right. But we don't owe any favors. We don't take any money from candidates at all. We work for you. You know, our job is to go out and recruit the very best and brightest and meet, meet, you know, your, your challenges for this district. Often I get, somebody will say, geez, I was a finalist over here, but I didn't get a, get a, an interview over here. Well, they didn't match up with what they're looking for. And that candidate would fail, and so would the district, and the bottom line, the kids and the staff would fail. And we don't want to be a part of that at all. So you will need to rest assure that we will customize and tailor this search for you. We'll give you lots of options on how to do the search, but it's gonna be your decision. It's your search, not ours, and I'll take any questions that you might have. Some of them I might not be able to answer, but these, these three may.
That's right. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you.
And thank you, presenters, for staying within your timeframe. I appreciate you. Yes, you did. I appreciate you doing that. And at this time, board members are free to ask questions, and we'll, and any of the presenters can help answer that, so.
I think we'll be social distance announced.
You're fine.
This way we can have the mask off, so.
That's right. Phil, I see you have a question?
Yes, Hank, you mentioned a two-year guarantee. So I'm a lawyer, so I'm left wanting to know, have you had to pay that?
How many times in our, in the history of, that my previous life, that I only had to do a couple times? One, I did down in Kentucky, and the governor took the superintendent that I wanted and made that person the commissioner of education in Arkansas.
Wow.
And so I, the board said I didn't have to do it, but I went back and did it anyway, because that's just the way, you know, I personally feel. If I tell you something, I'm gonna do it even though it's not my fault. No, a deal's a deal. And we did. We did that on, and I, I had one other occasion in 40-plus years, and it was a similar kind of thing. The person left, they didn't want him to, they wanted to leave. I think one of the things that I found in my, when I did searches...
I think one of the things that I found in my, when I've done searches personally, and I've led them, and I know that they, these folks here have led searches, is to, one, get to know the community really well, because that's important, because board members come and go, you know, but if the superintendent's there, by that I mean, I don't mean that you want to leave, it's just that you choose.
No, it's understandable, yes.
You know, but the superintendent, he or she, has to fit in the community, you know, and they have to be, become engaged into it and they got to understand the problems. And I'm really strong about that when we talk to candidates about coming into a community. Like we were talking about colleges and universities are a little bit different. And there will be some people saying, "No, that's not for me." You know, "That's not, that's not my makeup. You know, I'm more of a rural guy or I'm a rural person." And a woman might say, "You know, I'm not comfortable in that." So it's important for us to know you, know your challenges, so we can find people that are comfortable in that role, they'll get integrated in.
So Gary, how many searches have you been involved in?
I don't know.
600?
Probably about, I'd say 700, 800 searches I've been involved in at the K-12 level. I've done a lot of those state commissioners and state superintendents. And they're completely different too. I mean, they're all kind of political in a way, but you know, there's different skills for different positions. And I put this team together because I felt it was going to be a veteran team, the ones diverse in experience, and I think in this particular type of school district, you got...
Other questions?
Yeah. Are there any other questions?
I had, I sort of build on something that a number of you have mentioned. I'm not entirely sure that Springfield is a college town, even though there are a lot of colleges here. It's not a college town like Iowa City, you're the one I know best, Champaign.
Yeah.
As an Illinois alum. But in general, how are college towns different from, I don't know, non-college towns? Can you talk a little more about that?
It's more of a fishbowl kind of a situation. And usually when you are in a university or college town, they, you know, the folks are, the community has a pretty strong education background and expectations are pretty, pretty high, which is very similar to if you're doing a district that, that exceeds really high. And so the parents and so forth expect, you know, let's keep moving up that ladder. There are folks that don't want to be in those kind of settings. I, you know, you're a large school district, you know, right now a large school district. And I think you were last time I was here, when Norm was there, but I think there is a, you know, a strong education background here this year.
You'll have the challenges of a university town, but you'll also have challenges in the university, what I know about your district. And that, I went through in Iowa City. I can tell you that very difficult as well. When Cabrini Green was torn down, there was a great number of people coming to Iowa schools and that presents some challenges. I'm assuming you have some of the same challenges.
Along the same line, Omaha has a college, it's not a college town.
Right.
But Des Moines has a major college or a university, it's not a college town, but it has those elements as well.
And actually, you're all very diplomatic. You could just say that higher ed people are just difficult to get along with.
Which would not be untrue.
I have a story.
Well, you got a couple of higher ed people.
Well, I'm going to keep us on time because we're limited to time and we will mention that Charles works at our local...
I'll have a student.
Denise, I see a question?
So I'm intrigued that one of your last placements was Las Vegas, which is Clark County.
Clark County.
Over 300,000 students.
Yeah.
So just a quick, so how would you approach our service of less than 25,000 students? Even comparisons to places in the district that have some. Because I know we are a larger district, state and area, that was very significant.
We've done all different sizes of school districts. I mean, I've done 200 kids and Dick has done a lot of, a lot of small searches that come from Iowa, so you know, I'm, that's, we don't have a Las Vegas in Iowa, and I've done a lot of searches. I think the, the concept is virtually the same, meaning trying to find out what you're looking for in a superintendent, getting to know you individually and being able to know the challenges and the expectations that you want. And then being able to, to have a network. I've got, you know, nearly 40 associates right now around the country that have worked for me before. And they'll go out and help recruit to that profile. So the, the process is really not a whole lot of different. I'm not going to do anything, me personally, anything different than a large school district than I am one with 200 kids, because those kids and that 200 deserves the best leader they can get, you know, doesn't matter at all. In fact, he probably should get a better leader, you know, because when you're in those large districts, you can hire a lot of experts, but in some districts in medium size, you know, the superintendent has to wear a lot of hats. You know, you can't delegate, you know, all these things. You got to get down and get your hands dirty, so to speak. That's an Iowa, it's part of the Midwest.
And I would say it's important in any district to be able to relate to all elements of the community, and that's, that's a key part of it. Clark County or Hazel Press where I do this, we've been ahead of 1,000 students, is the ability to reach out to every aspect of the community and have all members of the community feel involved. Even though this is going to hear from often, we go above and beyond to make sure that you hear from all families and make them feel that they are part of the process.
And thank you. Trina, question?
So I'm the newest school board member, so excuse my ignorance if I ask questions that don't make sense.
For the best.
So you stated about aggressively recruiting, you talked a lot about recruiting and how important that is to your process, but I'm noticing here in your estimated cost that you talk about advertising totals. How does that advertising totals work in your recruiting? Are they separate or are they combined? Or why are we doing that much advertising when you're doing all of the recruiting yourself?
Yeah. Well, that's, that's a good question because the advertising, the base fee is 25,000. The advertising, I'm not one that believes spending a lot of money on advertising. I mean, I think you have to be in certain journals, certain professional journals, and I think you can do a lot of online rather than print advertising. But I roughly say around 3,500, but what we will do is give you a list of places where we might recommend and what it will cost, but you'll determine the cost of what we're going to do on that. We'll get a lot of candidates that will apply just because of our associate base throughout the Midwest and around the country. Your best superintendent may be right in this state. You know, I mean, I don't know. I don't, I don't have, I don't have a list, here's your next superintendent. You know, our job is to bring in the very best. But from an advertising standpoint, you know, I think you have to do some advertising because there's no way any firm in the country is going to know where everybody's at. But we do want to cast that net, you know, not only from border to border in the state of Missouri, but around the country.
Our list of advertising, a lot of it's free. We also work with organizations, OLS, NAPSE, in order to extend that. And with organizations like that...
They're free.
They're free or minimal cost, very minimal.
And just to keep us in the board, what I hear you saying is, is you could make recommendations and we could decide how much...
Exactly.
You can say, "We'll do this, we'll do this, we don't want that, we don't want that."
And we can also tell you approximately what the, what the return on your investment for that advertisement.
Okay. Bruce, Jerry, and Jerry?
Well, mine is with stakeholder groups. It's pretty easy, one-to-one, when you do it with us individually, you can do that. But now, based on COVID, that, I mean, used to group, you'd come in, you'd have whole groups and people would show up, and now basically everything's going to have to be online. And I think oftentimes online, we leave out a whole bunch of people who don't respond online because, and we're having, I don't want to say that, but there, it just leaves out a whole group. So since we can't now, this whole process is somewhat different. How do you make sure when you say, "We're trying to get some of these people whose kids are in school, but they're, they probably wouldn't have come to the meeting," and I doubt that they're going to respond online because they're not doing their subjects online? So how do we really, how are we able to get those characteristics that they think are important?
And I would like to extend on his, his question, which is, how could we do both? How can we potentially have both mediums available?
And I'm doing the same thing in Champaign right now, where we had the virtual stakeholder meeting and we reached out, we had, you know, all the communication, and then we also had in-person meetings with the social distancing with 50 seats in the room and the whole thing. And what we also did is we reached out to key community leaders, pastors, civic leaders, and had them to then contact the head of the NAACP, the head of Urban League. Basically, we worked with you and as I'm doing now, to make sure that you reach out to those people who basically sometimes feel disenfranchised and make sure that you are bringing them in. So we had both. We had the virtual and for example, there's one tomorrow night where we're having the in-person. And we're having it at schools in different areas across the town, as well as one within a community center. So the point is to go above and beyond your normal communication and we can work with you to make sure that...
We've done a lot of different ways. We'll give you some options. Dick doing it is just...
Yeah. And you know, I don't want to go into grand detail, but I think in terms of the concept, you get the idea. We can modify, we say, "We want to reach these groups and, and they may not be available online. How can we do it?" We'll figure it out with you.
And we'll do it.
Just like you're finding recruits.
And tell them we will travel to wherever they are.
Okay, thank you. Jerry?
One comment and one question. I appreciate your hands-off policy of recruiting somebody you placed.
Don't like to fish out of the same pool.
I appreciate that because that concerns me, displaced, churned, and it's that kind. Question is, have you placed any or sources of what I'd call non-traditional sources for a position? Have you placed, I mean, looked at pools of non-traditional sources of people who might meet the needs that we're looking for?
I was talking to the right person on this. I kind of led the charge around the country, you know, that I do think there's people that can run school districts that don't have the traditional background, because quite frankly, leadership is leadership if you're running an organization. It's all about how you treat people and what the expectations are. That usually works and I've, I've placed a lot of those people at, probably more so than any other firm ever. And I, I think it works a little bit better in a larger, you know, system than it does in a medium or small size, because in a medium, small size, there's only a budget and you can't hire a lot of expertise. But do I believe that there are some non-traditional folks that can run school districts? The answer is yes.
And if you so choose to have a non-traditional candidate as a board?
If they certified, so that is, that isn't a problem. I can give you a list of, because of time, I can give you a list of a number of people that I've placed around the country that do fit that mold, that have come out, either with an MBA, you know, business background, or I've even had a few military, former military people. But the business background's pretty important.
I have just a technical question in terms of, although you, all four have presented to us tonight and said that all four of you would be a part of the team that works with us. As the point of contact for our board, who would be the main person that I would be on task with, communicating with, to keep us on our timeline and to help direct our board? Do you know who that would be yet?
They'd probably all be pointing to me. I didn't see, it's kind of like the army, I didn't see anybody step up forward and say, "That would be me." I would be primarily, you know, the, the person involved. I'm involved in, you know, any search. I mean, I'm involved, the one deputy right now, we're wrapping up at Dallas, you know, as soon as Hino Hosen found out, he's superintendent, Michael Hino Hosen, soon as knew that I was doing this, he called me and said, "I want you to do this search for us." But I have another associate's really kind of working in that. So I kind of try to keep my fingers and everything on what's going on, but this will be my primary search that I will be doing with these folks right here. I've had a little bit of history here.
And standing behind us are 34 other people who know people who will be next to us.
Yes, and we read that in your applicant. I just was curious. And, and some of these people would be those that would help lead our stakeholder groups as well, right?
Right here, yes.
Those are two different questions. Who's not part of the concept?
Nobody else coming in.
What'd you say?
Nobody else coming in for the firm you're looking at.
Okay. That's, I just needed that clarification.
We'd like to see if you have students, we need students, students. I want to have the students.
Well, if you remember, I said that we're not here to sell the job or we're here to work the job. I really mean that. I mean, unless some medical reason or something, you know, we are in here. And if, if you say, "Hey, we, we need some additional support," you know, whatever it takes to get the job done, we're going to make sure that this is a successful search.
And you know the whole team here.
Yes, yes. Thank you very much. I, I'm keeping, I'm sorry, I feel like I'm a goalkeeper right now, you know? But keeping us on track, are there any other pressing questions before we move on?
Thank you.
I have one question.
Yes.
Can you get through Kansas City without construction?
No, not, you can't anywhere, not.
Very few objective truths, but that is one. No.
I would say is never leave without saying, "We look forward to the opportunity to work with you and love your job."
Really appreciate your time. And it's been a pleasure having this discussion and we'll have, if you, if we are fortunate enough to get the job, we'll have some further discussion and we'll give you various options and say, "This worked, this one's been a challenge," you know, because you've got to make that, you know, make that decision. There's not just one way to do a search.
And we're fine to work on.
We're going to leave some material, you know, for you and we look forward to having that opportunity.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'd go around shaking everybody's hand, but nobody would do it.
That's right.
Everybody hit the...
Nice to meet you. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Safe travels.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Safe travels.
Thank you.
Good seeing you.
Shake everybody's hand.
That's right.
And actually, I'm a graduate of Illinois, so, Illinois. Give my regards to Champaign.
So we are going to move right, as soon as this team transitions out, we will move the next team in. And so because we have two teams that we're hearing tonight, we will stay in our seats and keep moving forward. I know I gave you a sheet just to see what the RFQ was, just to jot down notes. We're not collecting these. These are just for your own personal reflection and to take any notes.
So are you ready for the next one?
Yes, yep. And if you want to go ahead and queue that presentation so it's already set? Yeah.
He is in the board conference.
Do they have a timer on their screen?
Well, it was up there, but then when the PowerPoint comes up...
I think, I think what happens is the timer is on the board doc screen, so the presentation covers it up. Because I kept hitting it thinking, "Ah."
Kathy and I are both monitoring it. Yes, yep.
And you've got the buttons.
Right, exactly.
Lights go off.
I'll throw a pin at Jerry and he can let them know, right?
He asked me to get these to you.
Okay, thank you.
This is an interesting family.
It's the same thing that you already have.
Uh, this part is.
Yes.
And I bet this is the presentation that's loaded.
It's unusual. It can't be all that uncommon for them to be in this situation. No. They're both big firms.
But it's normal to be in competition with these other firms.
New Jersey!
As of young, I mean, there's national...
Hello.
Hello.
Good, good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
Welcome.
Thank you.
As, as you know, you have up to 25 minutes to present and our board secretary and I will help keep track of time and then we'll have up to 20 minutes to ask you some questions. Does that sound okay?
That sounds wonderful.
Great.
Sounds wonderful.
And please introduce yourself and jump right in.
Okay. Is it okay if I speak without a mask?
Yes.
Absolutely. First, it's just, it's an honor to be here. It was great to see Gary. Gary and I worked together. He's a good guy and I would say, I call him a friend. My name is Dale Caldwell. I wasn't in the board proposal, but I'm one of the new national directors of Ray and Associates. I was involved, Gary was involved and involved now. Just a little bit about my background. I sit where you sit currently. I actually have been on two school boards for 22 years. So I've on the New Brunswick Board of Education, we're about 11,000 school district for 23 years. Been president of that school board for four years. And for the last 20 years, I've been on the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey School Board in New Jersey, which is the largest special needs school district. So students who are on the autism spectrum, who are multiply disabled and who are dealing with emotional challenges. And I've been president there for 19 years. So one of the things that I think, that I bring to Ray and Associates that they haven't had as much is really understanding the board perspective. You know, one of the challenges, and I've worked with a number of different, about 10 or so different searches, and some of the smaller districts, the board members say, "Well, we need to have somebody who's been a superintendent." And that may be true, but you really want somebody that's good and that fits in with that profile. And so I also, just not to talk all, but I had an opportunity to be the New Jersey School Board Member of the Year in 2009. So I really value this. And you say, "Well, why is, you know, why is someone, you know, here?" I think this is, as far as public service, this is one of the most important things that you can do. Everybody focuses on the president, but you're so far away from reality. You live reality every day. And I often say, a good day as a school board member was when nobody complains. Now, also education, I have to say that you are one of the most educated school boards that I've worked with. And so I had a chance, I got my degree in economics from Princeton, and then I got an MBA in finance from Wharton, and I got my doctorate in education administration from Seton Hall. I know a number of you have your doctorate, so.
You're fancy.
No, well, I see your list, you have very, very fancy stuff. And so, so let me go through this. And please, I'm okay if you're okay, if you want to ask questions as I go through it. Or is it your process?
I appreciate you being okay. We're trying to keep things the same.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay.
And plus, we could sidetrack your 25 minutes really fast.
Plus, they ask you more.
That's right, so we'll keep us between the ditches.
I'm used to that. So obviously, I'm with Ray and Associates. I've been involved with Ray and Associates for the last four years. You know, it's been around since 1975. You've heard from Gary and probably, you know, a lot of what Gary said are going to be very, very similar, obviously. And so I think you're going to make your decision based on, and I'm going to be the person, if Ray and Associates choose, is going to be working directly with you. And so I think the question is, who do we want to work with? You know, because the processes are probably pretty the same. Ray and Associates is obviously the oldest firm, it's the largest, it has more associates than others. We value diversity. We want to make sure that the board is making the decision with the input from the community. One of the things that I've always liked working with Ray and Associates is that there's a really great process to involve the community in deciding, "What are we looking for?" And I'm a big believer in a phrase that I use, "Call people up." But so often, everything's top-down, where you have people sitting in a boardroom making decisions without hearing the community. And I think that's really important. You know, even if you would decide on the same candidate, it's critical that the community feels like they have a voice. And knowing this board and just seeing what, reading your bios, I know you will value some of the input that you have, and that's one of the things that we do. Also, the associates and the firm, and again, I give Gary credit, you know, he started this. What we've kind of done is taken it to the next level, is really making sure you have a diverse group of associates from across the country. Diverse is not just gender, it's not just, you know, race, it's not just, you know, education experience. But I love traveling to different parts of the country. And, you know, there are different needs and different perspectives in different parts of the country. I saw that in your profile here, there is a good percentage of households that are below the poverty line, you know? And so obviously, you need a superintendent that, but there are households that are doing very well as well. So you need a superintendent that's sensitive to all of the students. So we have a group of associates that can really help us identify a broad range of individuals who can come in and be, from day one, a wonderful associate. So again, diversity is very important. Again, it's not just racial diversity, as I said. You know, the average number of completed candidate applications is about 50. Because Ray and Associates has been around a long time, people know that if they're looking for, you know, virtually, any great candidate who's a superintendent knows of Ray and Associates and will come to us as one of the, it doesn't mean they won't go to other firms, but they'll come to us, and HYA is probably second, you know, they'll come to us and put their name in the pool. I think we have about 3,500 visits to the website regularly. So that reputation means a lot. And it allows, you know, it helps, it makes it easy when Ray and Associates calls someone and says, you know, "Are you thinking about, you know, how's it going there? You know, what's going on?" One of the things that I'll talk about, and the second is that we don't, the other thing is we don't, this isn't about money, it's about long-term relationships. We don't put someone there and it's, "Okay, you're there five years, let's move you around. You're a great candidate, let's move you somewhere else." You know, it's really about it. And one of the things that I bring, and I'll be very honest, the old Ray and Associates, you know, liked it but didn't really take advantage, is I do a lot of board strategic planning, I do a lot of conflict resolution, you know, my background, you know, from Wharton and others, and so we do a lot of that. So those are things that, once you place someone down the road, if you say, "Hey, we may want to do strategic planning, we can do that as well." We don't have to, but we bring that broad range of experience. The process, and so the process is laid out and has been worked really well for 40 years. Obviously, we get this initial board input, you know, and we begin to develop this profile with the community, so you know, what is it that you're really looking for? And that is such a critical part of the process, because so often says, "Well, everybody's looking for a great superintendent." Well, a great superintendent, you know, could be a great superintendent here, but a horrible superintendent somewhere else. And I have to be very honest, which is why I mentioned the board conflict, when you have an educated board, you have a board, the odds of you getting a great superintendent are so much higher. In fact, a good percentage of the boards that are out there are in such conflict that they don't, that you have some good people who say, after a while, they see the board, because they're interviewing the board as well. And so we play a role of working with them and selling the board and really making sure that interaction works. Because it doesn't behoove us to place someone here that we know is going to have challenges. So that process, that profile development, the recruitment, a lot of firms talk a lot about recruitment, recruiting. I really believe that upfront process is as important as the recruitment. Then the candidate pool, we talked about the candidate pool, we've been around a while, we have a lot of candidates calling all the time, you know? As you know, all it takes is one bad board member to change the whole profile of the board. And go from a great board where you're supportive of the superintendent to where the superintendent's, you know, life is dismiserable. And again, a lot of people, if you haven't been a board member, you don't really understand how important that is to have communication. You don't have to agree, and you shouldn't agree on everything, but that communication is important. One of the things, I wrote a book called Intelligent Influence. I've written a number of books, another one's called School to Work to Success. But Intelligent Influence, I was actually going to write a book on leadership and looked up Webster's Definitions of Leadership, Command, and Authority, and found the word influence in each one of those definitions, kind of an etymologist. And it sent me on this path to understand influence. And why is that important in the search? It's important in the search is that the research shows that our musical tastes are developed between ages 15 and 25. Doesn't mean you don't like other stuff, but we all have that, when we first fall in love and we have that. And so we're all products of our influence. So when you're really looking at getting a board to interact, we need to understand everybody's music. And so when you bring a superintendent in, it has nothing to do necessarily with it, because we spend so much time on the resume, they did this for 25 years, they did that, but what is their music? Does their music match, and it doesn't mean you have to have the same music, but you want to create a symphony of people coming together around the diversity that is the largest district here in the state. And so that music analogy I use with a lot of leadership development and a lot of training. And so what we really want to do is to make sure that music is, really fits with where you want to go. And then strategically, you know, does this fit in that? So the selection of board candidates, one of the things, and I don't know if Gary's doing this, but Ray and Associates was always the only one that did the video interviews. And I really found that to be very useful, to really have you watch videos of the top candidates. So you really get a sense to see how they, and it's funny, when we were doing it before, it was like videos seemed weird. Now everybody's a Zoom expert, so videos are, you know, are like par for the course. So Ray and Associates was way ahead of the curve on that. You know, finalizing the search and beyond. You know, so really looking at, you know, it doesn't stop with, "Okay, you got a great candidate, you've picked them." We maintain contact with you, "How's it going?" We even have a survey, you know, for free, just continue to do that survey going forward. And we'll talk a little bit about that in a little bit. The important thing is, it's your search. This is, as a board member, this is the most important thing that you do as a board member. You know, policy is obviously, and one of the red flags that I look at at boards is, you know, do we have some micromanagers on the board? That want to come in and want to run, you know, they want to pick a superintendent that they can control, you know? And to be very honest, when I see the education and experience of this board, I know that's not the case, because you're too busy to do that. And that's what you want. You want a board that's too busy. And again, I have, I keep talking about that, and I'm not just kind of blowing smoke, there's so many boards that have problems, especially in New Jersey. So, you know, I'm sitting here saying, "Well, I saw your resume, I said, why can't you be in New Jersey? I need you guys there." So, you know, the individual board interviews, we want to talk to you, you know, we want to understand. And again, I mean, you can disagree without being disagreeable, which is great. You determine the stakeholder group.
Not in New Jersey. I am from the great state of New Jersey.
Let me tell you something. Whenever, whether it's good or bad, there's a Jersey angle anywhere. So I can tell you where there's somebody from Jersey and part of it. But you determine the stakeholder groups. I mean, who do we need to talk to? And we will encourage you to talk to the gadflies as much as you talk to the friends of the board. Because you want to at least make them, you know, they may say some crazy things, but you determine the timeline and compensation. We will put input, and one of the values of Ray and Associates is that we will tell you that, well, you know, that salary probably may be in your budget, but that salary may have to go up if you want to get a candidate. And remember, since this is the most important thing that a board does, you know, you want to, it is really worth the investment to get someone who's really good. Because that'll save the extra $20,000 or $30,000 that you want to save in your budget. Again, you guys understand that, a lot of people don't. You finalize the profile, you'll get the input from everybody and you'll finalize the profile. So, and, you know, we talked about stakeholder meetings, online survey, focus groups, et cetera, et cetera. You know, we aggressively, like all the other firms, we aggressively recruit. We have, you know, we have probably a larger database of people who will reach out to us because they've worked with us or they've been placed by us years before. You know, we screen according to profile and, you know, we'll bring six to 12 of the top candidates before the board. So we want to make sure that, it says eight to 12, but we try to bring, you know, even, you know, sometimes fewer, and we'll go back out if we need to. We really pride ourselves in doing research with the board, really do, in this day and age, because of social media, you can find some things. And even if we find some things, we'll sit with the board and say, "Well, how serious is this? Is this really something, you know, is, what's the situation? What's, you know, what impacted, what went on?" And again, one of the things we pride ourselves is no surprises, right? We don't want you to, you know, find out that somebody did something. The, so, you know, reviewing the top candidate applications, you know, the candidate videos, as I talked about. We have a matrix that at first, again, you will have no problem with this. Some people have problems figuring out the matrix, but you really want to rank candidates against each other. You know, so it's almost like the NCAA pool. I play it, but I've seen it. So, and so you do that. And that really, and it's interesting, because that allows you to really come up with, you know, a more objective evaluation of the candidates. The, you know, we'll help in the development of the board interview questions, those can be really, really key, we'll obviously ask each candidate the same questions. The final selection, you know, will obviously play a critical role in, because we have experience working with contracts everywhere, what kinds of provisions, and things change. You know, the contracts of five years ago, you know, I mean, we're in this COVID world, you know, who knows what the new contracts are going to look like, but we can kind of see what are the best practices. We have a two-year guarantee, you know, looking at the history, I don't think, I think maybe one time a superintendent changed their mind, but the two-year guarantee, we want to stand by this. And as I said, the whole point is long-term relationships. And it's all about building the new leadership team, you know? So, and then finally, so this is the survey that, you know, included in the cost is to do this survey, so that when someone comes, the onboarding of the new superintendent, you can really do a survey. And really understand where there's connection, where there's not connection, and it really helps to build the leadership team and developing positive relationships. And, you know, first impressions are lasting. So it's important that the superintendent, whoever she or he is, can get off to a good start. And the good start is not always agreeing, but one of the things in all of my consulting work is that communication is the foundation of every problem. And so if we can really begin to foster a strong communication, then we can, then we will have success. And so it's, you know, it's a proven search process tailored to the needs of your district. So with that, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. And as everyone knows, the handout, it's okay, the handout was also in the folder here for any reflection and notes on that. Thank you, Dell, right?
Dell, yep.
Thank you so much for presenting to us. And at this point, we will take questions from board members.
How many of your associates normally would be on a team that would be the main people working with our search?
Typically, one or two. But what we have is, we have about four or five who are all part of the team. As far as, you know, like I would come here, whatever it may mean, I'd be here, I might have one or two other people with me, depending on what we're doing. Now, when we do the community stakeholder, what we can have is three or four people to do that. But typically, if I'm meeting with the board, we really don't necessarily need anybody. But some of these other things, I'm not an expert in contracts, you know, I'm not going to be the expert to tell you what contracts are. We have people that have that expertise. You have a whole team behind you, even though you may see me.
And so, but you would be the main?
I would be the main, because I, you know, Mike told me loud and clear, you want to see the person-
Yes.
That, you know, I actually had a conflict, so I actually moved the conflict out, because I said, "We want to see the person we're going to work with." So I'm that person.
Okay. Other questions? Denise?
I'm going to ask the same question I asked the other time. I think that's the appropriate fair thing to do. So you have placed superintendents at very, very large districts.
Yep.
And then we're maybe the largest district in the state of Missouri, but we're not an extremely large district when you look at some of the 1,000. So how does that, so have you placed superintendents at much larger districts than-
Oh, yeah.
You know, Ray and Associates, you've been around a long time. So how would you, how do you approach that process of, I mean, is it basically the same? So how would you approach it, placing in a superintendent in a district of our size versus very large versus very small?
Well, the process is the same, you know? And so a lot of it, and as I said, a lot of it depends on the board. You know, you're driving the process. And so even very, very large districts, I mean Miami, I mean Las Vegas, I think, you know, those are very, very large districts. Those aren't necessarily the hardest districts. I know Seattle was probably the hardest district, because they were looking for some very specific things that didn't necessarily have anything to do with the quality of the superintendent. So one of the things is, we really want to understand, as we would here, is what is this board thinking about for the superintendent? And then do the stakeholders. Now, the stakeholder meetings would be larger, you know, you probably would have more if you're doing, you know, you're doing a district like a Miami, or, you know, or Vegas, or somewhere, we'd have to do, we'd spend a lot more time doing that. But the input and the process is the same, we would process, we have a back office, I don't process the forms that people would fill out, you know, and asking, you know, I don't know, if you, I don't think we have it in the packet, but we have some basic, this is our standard form, kind of qualities desired, and people check it off, and they can do it online, and it's in multiple languages, so I can get this to you if you don't. And this makes it a lot easier for people, and so, instead of getting 2,000 that we might get here, we might get 5,000 from the bigger district. But the process is the same, it's really the same.
Good, thank you.
One question. In your packet, it talks about the interview process and community input. Do you recommend, or are you recommending, or would part of your process be having community people interview, kind of implies having community input to interview candidates, finalists, kind of thing? I don't know if that's what that means, but that's kind of what it says, and I was just curious, is that a standard thing that you guys do, or is that, I mean, that's kind of a decision I know the board would make, whether we want to do that, I just didn't know your history of, you know, it talks about bringing before a community group for, quote, an interview.
So the interview that we mean is not the interview here, but, so for example, I did T-Nex, New Jersey, I did Lynchburg, Virginia, Patterson, New Jersey, which is roughly about the same, roughly about the same size here. And so we had, in a big forum, we had a community meeting, and we had each of the candidates, and I emceed, and people would ask questions to the candidate. So, and then they, based on those questions, they would kind of, you know, they would kind of interview. So wasn't, you know, and again, the feedback from that would come to the board, but like some people will have some key people in the room when you're doing this interview, we're not saying that, this is the community stakeholders. Because remember, when the person comes, if I were going to be superintendent, you know, I would want that, I want to kind of hear questions from the community, I want to be community-facing. And so, you know, so the community's not going to make the decision, but the other side of that is, it helps the community feel like they really have some input, they've gotten to see this person. I mean, the worst thing, you know, perception is reality, and the worst thing you can do is a secretive search, could be the best person in the world, they walk on water, but this board interviews them, you know, you send the resume out to people, and they look at the resume, but you make the decision, then people say, it's fixed, we knew, you know, and again, I have no idea if there are any internal candidates, but the more internal candidates you have, the more you want to do that. That's even more important if you have the community asking, so it's not ram-rodded into, or perceived as being ram-rodded. That's a good question.
Just to clarify what Jerry was referring to, you're not saying that that is, you're saying that's an option?
No, it's an option, oh, no, no, it's not a requirement.
Okay.
No, 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 it's not, it's not, if the board doesn't want to do that, then that's, it's your search, I mean, really is your search, and every search is different, every search is different.
I have a question just about recruitment, in terms of, you know, one strategy is to, one strategy is to host and advertise for something, and another strategy perhaps is to use relationships that this organization has to seek qualified applicants. So can you speak a little bit more about how you all, at this timeframe, are involved in the recruitment process? Not necessarily the advertising process, but the recruitment process?
Good, and that's why I didn't touch on it, because I knew I would have a question about that. So, so a number of things that are really important, so Ray and Associates has great relationships with a lot of the associations, so, you know, as you can see, so whether it's the Latino Association, the African-American Association, the school board, national school boards, I don't know, I go every year except this year.
That's right.
National school boards, yeah. I mean, that's one of the reasons I do this, is I can see people that I, you know, when I'm there, and so that's important. We have our associates, who we know, because there's a search, this is what they're looking for, you know, we've known people over the years, so we know that this may fit your profile, or someone may want to move, is ready to move somewhere. So that's a piece of it, so the association's a piece of it, and, you know, advertising that we talked about. And so it has to be a multi-pronged effort, especially now. And the nice thing is, we have a lot of people who are very deep in education, that really are, send some really good referrals, really good referrals, but we try not to, we don't want to steal anybody, because we have a relationship, but we make it known, and people do visit the website, and that's very, very powerful as well, that they, you know, and it's kind of a qualifier, because if you're looking at the website, if you have a job and you've been there and you're looking at the website, you're probably interested in something.
Great, any, first, that's a question?
How many associates really, and what does that mean? I mean, you're, I'm, how do you, how do those Ray and Associates define who associates are, you know, throughout the country?
They're really people who are qualified to do a search, to really be part of the search, so they've been either at superintendents, retired superintendents, or board members, or have some educational experience, so they are, and so they also do research, so, you know, we'll pay people to do research. So with this search, I may have three or four people doing some research. So, and say we have 50 people applying for here, the people who have educational experience who can actually go through, you know, kind of the pre-research, and then they'll get me some folks that I'll look at, and then I'll get you some folks, so there's a screen, so those are the kinds of associates. But they're experienced, I mean, these aren't people of, you know, high school students off the street, these are people that have had senior roles in public schools.
Great, great question. And so if I hear you answering that question from Bruce, it's that there may be, you would be our lead contact, you may bring a couple other people into a closer circle, but then you also use associates for various projects, is that what?
Yeah.
There's not really a number, I don't hear you saying it's more.
Well, I mean, the number that, I mean, the old Ray and Associates, the number was 140 around, you know, again, as the new, as you know, I mean, Gary sold the firm to someone, this is a new person, did that, realized it really, it wasn't 140, so we don't, you know, so, I mean, it's probably close to 90 or so people over the years, and some have gone with, frankly, some have gone with Gary. But they're really qualified people that will actively do this, and there are people, you know, and again, I've been an associate, so I was an associate before I really ran several searches, and now I'm becoming one of the national directors of searches, so. And so people can kind of work their way up through the pipeline if they want, a lot of them are retired, there are a lot of them said, I don't want to be a superintendent anymore, I, you know, I've done it, I've been there. My mentor is a guy named Mike Rush, who was, who actually brought me into Ray and Associates, and was with him now, he's with the new Ray and Associates, and he's a retired superintendent in a number of districts, and just a great guy, but very connected, he's African-American, but very connected, virtually every black superintendent knows Mike Rush, and so he's very, very connected, and just a good human being. And again, I'll give Gary credit, I think the culture that Gary created is really one of really caring about school districts, of really wanting somebody really good to do that. And if they, you know, they're like me, and it's about the kids, it's not about the superintendent, it's not about the board members, it's really about the kids. And I really feel that this is so important, because, I mean, with COVID and other things, I mean, it's tough enough, so, you know, so, and again, one of the things, my dad, who just recently passed away, knew in March with Dr. King, and so my favorite picture is a picture of him, Ralph Abernathy, and Dr. King, in Boston in 1965, to march to integrate the Boston Public Schools. And my mom was a schoolteacher for 50 years, so I see this is really kind of, what I'm doing is really kind of an extension of making sure that all kids, black, white, yellow, green, are getting the highest quality education, and it's tougher than ever because of budgets and because of other stuff, so I feel your pain, trust me, especially now.
Yes. I'm sorry about your father.
Oh, thanks, thanks, the, there was a wonderful two-hour memorial service that was great, but he's with me in spirit, so.
That's right, that's right. Any other closing questions before we move forward tonight?
My mom's a graduate of Douglas College.
Oh, really, right, yeah, right in New Brunswick, that's where I live, in New Brunswick.
That's why I wanted you to know.
Yeah, you've got some real Jersey connections.
I am Jerseyed up, my man.
Jerseyed up, the, but I love it out here, I mean, it's nice, it's nice, the Ozarks, I mean, it's, it's.
It is, but it's not the Jersey Shore.
No, it's not the Jersey Shore, you do miss the shore.
And we're sorry you're here on a rainy day.
Yeah.
The Ozarks looks much more beautiful than today, but, okay, seeing no other questions and keeping us on time. Dale, thank you so much for your presentation tonight, we've learned a lot, and also thank you for your service on a school board.
Thank you.
In the United States, we appreciate that. So you are free to move forward with your evening, and Tammy will escort you.
Wonderful.
There we go.
Have a good night.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Travel, thanks.
Safe travels, yeah.
No matter what you decide, if you need help or anything.
Thank you, thank you, Dale. Awesome. So at this time, we can call our special meeting towards the close, we all have reflective time to process our notes and review all of the.
Well, there it goes.
Twenty-five minutes, come on.
I have 25 minutes, no, that's right.
That's right, that's right. Our goal for tonight was to listen to our presenters, to get any questions answered, and we can individually take time to reflect on our notes. Tomorrow, we will hold a vote and any discussion at that time. So at this time, we, our next agenda item is to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
So the recommended action is that the board meeting adjourn, and Jill has made that motion, Charles will second that motion, any discussion, hearing and seeing none, we can now vote.
Hope it's not close.
I think I'm out.
We can take a verbal, Jerry votes an affirmative, Denise votes an affirmative.
I hit the X, I shouldn't have hit the X.
I voted, I think.
Okay, motion passes, meeting adjourned.